Alright, everybody, if I can have your attention, please. Thank you. Alright, uh, can we get everybody in from the doorway? That was hanging out outside. Is anybody else waiting to try to squeeze in here? No? Okay, cool. Uh, we're gonna bring the meeting for, uh, the planning committee meeting for, uh, April 12th to order. Uh, thank you all for attending. Uh, it's a fairly informal room to have this meeting in compared to where we normally do, so, uh, bear with us if people haven't been to the meeting in the last couple of months since we've been having them. Uh, we apologize that obviously the space is limited and seating is limited. Um, alright, so we'll do, uh, roll call real quick. Steve Ball.
Here.
PB Benziger.
Here.
Jan Chastain is absent. Chad Huffman.
Here.
Delphine Jettow.
Here.
Drew Rogers.
Yeah.
All parents.
Good.
And David Fisher on the computer. Uh, so approved minutes, um, from, uh, March 22nd. Uh, if you guys have any issue with the minutes. As they were presented back this. No? Alright, go on, Eric, can we move to approve? Alright, thank you. Delphine, you got a second?
Hi, I'll second.
Thanks Chad. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Alright, minutes are approved. Um, William, do you have any additions or additions?
No, we don't.
Alright, we've got two agenda items today. Um, the, uh, well, I might go ahead and, no, just go, go ahead, we'll start the little first one before we make our public comment thing after we're done.
Alright, uh, Bridge presentation chair. So, uh, we need to make members of the planning commission and members of the public. Uh, this first item tonight is a subdivision application for rather an amended preliminary plat. The Bridges at Black Canyon amended preliminary plat is a proposal for 26 single-family residential lots located within Bridges PD. Uh, the zoning designation here is R2 low-density district and R3 medium-density district. Uh, this is located on outlot B and F.
Could you guys speak more quickly? Yes.
Thank you.
You're disrupting the meeting, folks. We got it about 10 comments ago. Thank you.
We're in your task. Okay, yes, please be quiet. We're going to continue, thank you.
So again, uh, the zoning designation here is R2 low-density district and R3 medium-density district. Uh, this is located on, on outlots B and F of the previous filing, which are shown on this map in the red outline. It is worth noting that E lots are limited to the western portion of these areas. As you know, this is an amended preliminary plat application. Any preliminary plat application is valid for five years after approval by city council. This allows the applicant to put in infrastructure improvements. Uh, after the five years in order to continue the subdivision process, the applicant must put in an amended preliminary plat application, which may or may not be the same as previously approved. Uh, in this case, the previous preliminary plat application was approved in 2014 and thus is expired. This renews this portion of the subdivision with minimal change. They have been updated in order to reflect newer city standards and addressing stormwater based on current conditions of the site. This does not amend the Bridges PD. Eventually, the applicant will need to submit a final plat in order to finalize the lots. Uh, here are our subdivision review standards. A proposal should be consistent with master plans, subdivision and zoning regulations, and other applicable references. Uh, we do review the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, et cetera. The availability of water, means of sewage collection and treatment, stormwater drainage, et cetera. Compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife and vegetation, adjacent streets and traffic flow, availability of fire, police, and emergency services, and the impacts on areas of schools. One note about our comprehensive plan. Uh, this plan is not a legally binding plan, but does provide guidance for zoning and other land use decisions. It is possible that sections of the comprehensive plan may conflict, but the plan illustrates general and flexible locations for land uses and densities. If the municipal code determines both the height requirements, setbacks, and other development standards. Our future land use map shows this area designated as residential mixed density low and residential mixed density medium. Uh, these indicate that the area is appropriate for a variety of residential types, including single-family duplex townhomes or triplexes. Again, the underlying zoning ultimately determines the allowability of housing types. As mentioned, this is both in R2 and R3. R2 is intended to provide a quiet low-density development for single-family residences along with other compatible land uses. R3 is intended to provide an area suitable for single-family homes and duplexes. The proposed subdivision is a use by right into the zoning districts. Uh, here is the subdivision plat itself. Uh, as usual, the first page mostly flat notes and signature lines. And I know that these are hard to read on the screen here. Uh, these are available in tonight's packet and are available online. The second page shows the subdivision itself. As stated, 26 residential lots located along the Wright's Way plan to be dedicated. Uh, this represents very little change to the previously approved preliminary plat for this area. Staff finds that the amended preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the zoning district. Staff recommends the, uh, conditional use of, uh, conditional approval, excuse me, of the Bridges at Black Canyon amended preliminary plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I believe you have good.
Stand up, state your name and address, please, for us. Uh, yeah, Eric Feely, I'm the general manager of Brookridge Bridges, uh, 22 on Black Canyon Highway. And? Anything to add, or? No, I mean, I think everybody that's part of the Bridges committee knows this has basically been planned forever and expired. Uh, some of the things changed. City's been great work with, we went through several reviews of that building in the city. Uh, you know, we're down to four lots right now, they're on sale. Uh, so, the seventy brokers knew it, right? And so, yeah, we're just trying to get some more stuff open and our plan is if we get, once we get approval, we'll go to bits, you know, get some costs figured out and see what we're going to make. So, just, uh, try to move things forward, basically.
Were there any major changes, like, you, there were some, but would you? Um, Scott, you want to talk about it, or Eric?
It was pretty minimal, that.
Yeah, so the original PD and vendor plat before all of the bridges essentially matches it, you know, back from the, I think, late 90s, early 2000s. So, no major changes in lot quantity or counts laid out. Um, the reason they expire is codes change. Um, so with modern codes, there were some, uh, new stormwater drainage infrastructure necessary. We state requirements from our quality and quantity. Um, you know, modern fire standards and all those had to be met, so, um, all that is reduced to make sure that, um, every view and pressure there is supported. Like I said, we went several iterations and have all looked out.
Good. Thank you. Do you have any questions for?
So, I, so you had this plan five years ago. It expired, you'll be knowing that. You think you may go another five years before you start building? You just have a few more lots before you start building? No, uh, I would tell you right now, our plan is to, if we get these 26 lots, is to, no, we, we're ready to go. Uh, yeah, I'm not more ready than you, so there's also, there's always the big guy that's kind of standing here, but has to play, and then we're trying to do a four-rotten block stuff while on the west side, so, uh, no, it's just we, we, uh, honestly kind of got behind, if you will, with the three, the, the run and selling lots, and we should've done this a couple of years ago. Uh, we bought, uh, 12 years ago we bought it, so, I mean, the lot is definitely kind of expired when we even got here, so it was kind of over. You know, it was a matter of having to redo this process regardless of what's been kind of restarted the bridges anyway, so we're just trying to get through it, I guess you'd say.
I'd say to expand on that, so that, it didn't expire five years ago. This is the first Bridges plat in at least 10 years. I said the small, they did a small one by their clubhouse a couple of years ago, it was one of those, but.
Yeah, Signature Ridge, right? It would be on.
Yep, oh yeah, the Signature Ridge. This is the first, um, in this area, uh, since kind of the original run of the bridges.
If they did have something five years ago. Yeah, I thought I heard five.
No, preliminary plats expire every five years, but this one lasts, this, this particular area has lasted for more than.
More than, way more. Oh, okay. Okay. Why are you saying it lasts? I just gave you all my years. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Eric. Uh, alright, so we'll open up the, uh, public comment portion, uh, for this agenda item. Uh, because we don't have, uh, podium for you guys to come up to, um, just like the applicant just did, if you could stand up, state your name, uh, and address for us, if you do want to comment. Anybody out there? Sir?
Uh, my, pardon, my name is Les Grimes. 2116 Majestic Circle. I live on a property adjacent to the development, and my question is primarily for Eric and his understanding of the plans. We have a wonderful view out west, you know, looking towards the Al Capagre, and I don't know the exact constraints in terms of the height that you intend to build. I'd love to see it a single-story, family home, if you will, even a duplex, but, you know, to the degree that we can minimize the impact of yous.
Right, so.
Hold on one second, Eric, sorry, Les. Um, if you just address your comments to us, once the public comment period's over, we'll, we'll address your concerns to Eric. Sorry, it's a formality, but we just got to do it that way.
So again, it's, it's the, what is the maximum build height? Um, and I'd, I'd love to see it a single-story, you know, development for, for homes or duplexes.
Any other questions or comments to us?
Uh, no?
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? I thought I saw somebody else over here. Sir?
Me.
Yep?
Uh, my name is Bill Volk, uh, 2262 Majestic Circle. Um, I'm not adjacent to the property, but, uh, I do utilize Stonebridge quite a bit, and I understand that one of the access points is off of Stonebridge, and I was wanting to know from the planning department, has those, have the impacts on additional vehicles and traffic been put into the planning of 26 homes? Uh, because that is now a very heavily used street, uh, because Cirque Way got opened up a number of years ago, and, um, and now you're putting in 20 mile per hour speed limit signs, and it's a big impact on, on that street. So I'd like to know if, uh, transportation impacts have been put into the property.
Thank you.
Anyone else out there? Sir?
Yeah, my name's Jack Heino, and I live on 207 State Drive. I assume that we were going to view, um, at this meeting, a plat that showed the actual street connections? I haven't seen that. The other thing is, is that I would like to see the type of homes that are being proposed. Makes a big difference if I have a two-story, three-story. I'd like to know what these homes are, that are going to be a part of this, um, this development, and I think it would be nice to have an idea as to what the price range would be. Is that information available now?
Uh, we'll get to you, Jack, once we close that public comment section, okay? Anybody else? Going once. Going twice. Sir?
This is again. Okay. Don't.
Anybody else in the back there that I may not be able to see? Alright. We're gonna, we're gonna close the public comment portion of tonight's agenda item, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Uh, so real quick, just, uh, so that we're all on the same page, obviously the applicant can answer any questions they want to, uh, but they don't have to. If they, if they don't choose to at this time, uh, the preliminary plat, uh, is not the stage where we start talking about, uh, the design of the homes and how much they cost and everything else. Um, those are later stages of development. At this stage, all we're looking at is what is on here, uh, and one that we had before that. Uh, William, I don't know if you can bring that one up, but, um, where the lot lines are being drawn and the major infrastructure items are, uh, being identified. Uh, if you do want to pull that up so we can show, there were, uh, I think the road connections are on there, um, to answer at least the one question. Um, staff, if you want to, Scott, if you do want to address the traffic part of this, if you, if you want to.
Yes.
Okay.
It is also important to note that there is a rigorous process through the architectural committee through the Bridges, that even though we don't know what's going to be there, it's going to be within the parameters of the Bridges' architectural, um, guidelines, which you can find on their website pretty easily.
And Eric, once Scott, well, yeah, once, once Scott gets done, I will give you a chance to comment about whatever you want to.
Yeah, so as far as the road network and traffic goes, this is the original PD from 2000, I believe, um, recorded in 2000, microscope, 2004. Um, so this is kind of what dictates the overall layout of the bridges since the very beginning. Um, so these are shown on here, this is Chimney Rock Circle here, and this is the piece they're doing on the south side. So, um, traffic-wise, they're not interconnected, so only half, you know, only these lots here, um, 12, would go out to Stonebridge. So that's small enough that it doesn't trigger a formal traffic study. Um, it's 250 trips per day that trigger a formal traffic study under our subdivision code, um, but even with those two combined, um, it doesn't trigger that. But, you know, that being said, this is how the Bridges was laid out from the very beginning. So, just as a city, we wouldn't have any means to tell them that they can't, you know, access that roadway that they planned for and designed from the very beginning. These are, these are designed and built by the Bridges, um, since, since inception. Um, that being said, we are working on, you know, the next piece that will happen, um, traffic-wise originally in this area will be the extension of East Oak Grove. Um, so we have the 6700 extension we're working on, that's been bringing a lot more traffic on 6700 Road, um, to give it somewhere to go without, you know, we need alternate routes to towns and hillcrest. Um, that'll all run through here. That right away's been dedicated, and that's more or less ready to go. Um, it's just funding, finding funding availability to complete this reach of road. So, when that comes, that will take some pressure off of, of Stonebridge, um, but it's also kind of an ability to that traffic pressures in all these areas are growing and will continue to grow, just as montrails are growing. So, that's the vein of our existence, is trying to stay ahead of that and keep the intersections at capacity. Volume-wise, they're all within, um, volumes of the roads to service, and will be with this additional.
Where, where is this subdivision really happening? I can't find it.
Uh, so it's this, it's this road right here, and this one right here. So this is the whole Bridges', you know, the entire master plan of the Bridges community, is what this is showing. So you can kind of see the other road connections, because this is, this is East Oak Grove here. So right now, um, 6700 comes down, you can take a jog to go over to, you know, the offset of 6700 there. Um, and this will connect through, uh, East Oak Grove, you know, this is a property dated back in 2014, I think, um, to finish that through, so this will connect that missing link, um, between Bridges Drive and 6700.
Alright, thanks Scott. Uh, Eric, did you want to, go ahead, respond to any of that?
As far as I, how do you propose that? We've talked a lot about it, um, there are several people that live there, a member of Mass, as I see Mass, that we've talked about. Obviously, Delphine explained it perfectly, but our design review had, I was, our CCR dictate what heights to be, but I can tell you I've already talked to, like, DRB about that. We're, we're aware, we're aware. If you look at the lot, the plan, I'll still walk it back right into the other house, probably going to be hard, and it has an approval for 30 foot. So ours is either 20 feet or 30 feet. I'm better aware it isn't, but I'm not sure. So, I guess all I would say about planes is we're, we're sensitive to that, right? I'm not the one off to a big decision, though. I've had the discussion with everybody, and we know the different impacts, not only you guys, but people on Stonebridge. And that's true for all of the Bridges. We're getting into that middle section of Bridges as we develop that whole area, it's going to have some impact, but we're aware of it, that's all I can say. I can't wrong the ship. As far as the homes, we're not going to be building a home, so, you know, the lots are going to be more expensive lots than the ones we typically have, because they're much larger in size, pretty, pretty nice lots with kids to use, so, they're going to be a little more pricey than the ones we typically have, uh, which would indicate, I would assume, much nicer homes. Um, but.
Thanks Eric. Do you have any questions for, uh, the staff, or?
The committee, I'd be willing to know how many of these homes are going to cost, that is something they'll, they'll, I have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I want to bring that up to my, there's something we don't discuss. We're not prepared to.
Is there any other concerns or questions still?
No.
Steve? No. Um, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I invite a motion to recommend to city council approval of the Bridges at Black Canyon amended preliminary plat application with the following conditions. The approval of this amended preliminary plat is expressly conditioned upon the city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of the staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Thanks Delphine. Uh, do I have a second?
Okay.
Alright, nice for you. Um, any discussion on the motion, guys?
I'm actually.
If you've read the text, you never find it.
That looks crazy. I mean, it's nice to see it come with fruition, you know, the regulation.
Alright, in that case, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, alright, so we're going to move on to the second agenda item, um, which is why I assume I'm supposed to be here, all of you are here. Um, before that, if we, uh, if you just, here, right, that is, if there's anybody else outside, I see a couple of people out there, we'll let them in, I'll see if Eric just left, so if there's a free seat, if anybody wants to take a seat over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I did, I didn't want to talk about that one, so. Alright, get everybody in. There's some people back. Guys, despite the, uh, sound board things that are in here, this room actually is very hard to hear in, um, so if I could get everybody just to not talk while other people are talking, that would be much appreciated. So I've got, we got, what are you guys timing? Chad's got, somebody's got it, alright. Um, alright, so, uh, we'll let the staff report go first, and then we'll read the public comment thing. William, go for it.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so we have received an application to annex a 35.5 acre piece of land into city limits. Uh, just to be clear, at the front here, this is not a subdivision application, we have not received a subdivision application. Uh, this is strictly related to the proposed zoning for the annexation. Uh, as you know, whenever we get an annexation application, we do bring this forward to the planning commission to vote on a recommendation for zoning that will ultimately go before city council. The council hearing date is scheduled for May 2nd and a second reading for May 16th. Again, this property is 35 and a half acres in size, it's located on the north side of Miami Road and is mostly surrounded by existing city limits. It is within the city's urban growth boundary and both city water and sewer service area. The area is urbanizing and, as is required by the state, at least 1/6 of the perimeter of the property is bordering existing city limits. Uh, this would also annex that portion of Miami Road that fronts along. Here is a surrounding zoning map of the area. The properties to the north and east are zoned as B2 highway commercial district, the area to the west is R1B small estate district, and the area to the south is B4 neighborhood shopping district with a conditional approval that prohibits multifamily. The applicant is requesting the designation of R2 low-density district, which is intended to provide a quiet low-density development for single-family residences. Environmental protection is provided by allowing only single-family residences along with certain other compatible land uses. Uh, here is the annexation plat. This shows that most of the property is existing bordering, uh, bordering existing city limits, excuse me. Uh, thus meets the state's contingency requirements. Uh, this also shows the exact meets and bounds that would be annexed with this application. According to the future land use map in our comprehensive plan, uh, this area is actually split. Part of it is designated as residential mixed density medium, which allows for a variety of residential types ranging from single-family homes to townhomes or triplexes. The majority of these areas are in parts of the region that are not yet developed, and that the northern portion is designated as major center, which is intended to provide a wide range of community and regional retail uses, offices, hotels, and personal and business services, uh, as well as mixed use or multifamily development. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting low-density residential here, uh, which only allows for single-family. According to our growth area map, this property is within growth area one, which represents the most cost-efficient area for the city to grow. It represents areas that where there are existing utilities available to the property or close by. And so, in summary, the area is urbanizing, meets the state's contingency requirements for annexation eligibility. An annexation agreement has been signed by the property owner. Since the area is larger than 10 acres, an annexation impact accord is required and has already been filed with the county. The proposal is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare, city annexation policy and the comprehensive plan. City staff recommends approval of the R2 zoning designation request. And, uh, is the applicant somewhere in the room here? No, it's full. But I'm here if need be. He's not here.
No, no, I'll, I'll mention on the infrastructure side of things, so, um, like mostly for the public's benefit, so, you know, this is just zoning. Um, so when they come in with their subdivision plan, that's, we haven't seen anything yet as far as layouts or lots or utilities or anything. When they come in with their subdivision plan, that'll build before staff, usually that goes multiple iterations, and that's where we work out traffic, the traffic studies, water, make sure the fire flow, everything works. Um, sewer, make sure adequate sewer capacity is available, uh, some of the environmental considerations for drainage, uh, wetlands, any of those things that come into play. Overall road layout, um, how it's laid out, what it's connected to, whether it's interconnected to neighborhoods, all of that, uh, these things are all completely speculative at this point, we haven't seen a single thing, so, um, that, that does come later, that gets worked out, you know, at a, at a staff level, and then that would come for the planning commission, um, in a public setting for comment on those, when those come, so. Just in case there's any questions about that.
So Will, question for you. Um, and just to give some comparison or some general consideration, what is the minimum lot size in an R2 zone?
So R2 minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. Uh, of course, there is no maximum.
Right. And so theoretically, the developer could put in bigger lots if they want to, but they can't go any smaller than 72, uh, the 7,500?
Assuming it is ultimately designated as R2, correct?
Right. And when it comes to the building height restrictions, what are the building height restrictions? They want to build a four-story house, can they do so?
So there's a 35-foot, uh, maximum height, uh, for all residential zoning districts. That's applicable for R2, R3, R4, every residential zoning district.
Even R1?
Correct.
They could theoretically build R, a 35-foot in R1?
Correct.
So, okay, thank you, Will. Thanks, Chad.
Uh, these are. Yeah, go for it.
And there currently ag in the county, is that right?
Yes.
There's no, it currently.
Mike, can we add, just, I think to pick up Chad's clarification, that only, Will, or, correct me if I'm wrong, but only single-family residents are allowed here, nothing else is allowed, not just as a use by right, but conditionally, nothing al, I mean, there's other uses, but no other residential uses in a multifamily housing, is that correct?
Yes, si, single-family is the only, uh, residential use that's allowed. There are certain other uses such as parks, um, I believe places of worship are a conditional use, but as far as residential use, it's only single-family homes.
Well, you got any questions for staff?
I don't know.
Okay, PB?
No, three questions, Jeff.
Yeah. Not a comment, but a clarification request? Uh, hold on one second, sir. Um, so, uh, we're going to open up the public comment portion of tonight's agenda item, and, uh, Levine. Wait for it. Alright, let me go ahead and read this, um, before we get that going. Alright, so the public comment period, tonight's agenda item, uh, is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns, uh, or questions on the agenda item being heard by the planning commission. Uh, if you'd like to comment this evening, uh, please raise your hand, uh, you'll be called upon, uh, and as before, just stand up and state your name and address, please. Um, your comment period is limited to three minutes. Um, we've got a little timer up here, normally we would have a light that would tell you that you've got 30 seconds left to wrap up your thought. Uh, in this case, Chad will just raise his hand or something like that.
I'll give you a one-minute warning when you're down to one minute left.
Yep, and basically just try to wrap up what you're trying to say or point you're trying to make, uh, in that time. Looks like we've got a lot of people here, so we'll be courteous of everybody's time tonight. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the planning commission. I know it's hard in here, but we've got everybody, like, standing next to us. Please address your comments up here to us and not to the applicant or to the staff. We'll handle that after the public comment period closes.
Is it possible in future meetings to have PA system or something we might adopt to...
Hopefully, this is one of the last ones that we have in here. Hopefully, this will be one of the last ones we have in here. Yep, so the other room, yeah, the other room's being remodeled, and I think they're almost done, so... All right, so please be aware that neither the planning commission, the staff, nor the applicant are expected to respond directly or engage in debate with your questions after the public comment period, or, sorry, during the public comment period. We will ask questions of the staff and applicant after the public comment period is over, as we deem necessary and appropriate. Let's see, so we'll allow everybody to speak one time, based on what, you know, feedback that you are giving. If we deem it necessary to let you speak again, then we will go through another round if that's necessary. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. Once the public comment period is closed, the planning commission will not accept further public comment. All right, and with that, we will open up the public comment portion for tonight's agenda. Ideally, we can work forward to back, back to front, rather than just hodgepodge, but let's hope we start up here. If you have one to talk... Yep, sir?
From handle that there, 2929 Ivy Drive. We're talking tonight about annexing a piece of property for future development, okay? As much as it saddens me to say, this city has shown no interest whatsoever or no ability to maintain Miami, which is going to be a major thoroughfare through for whatever the development comes through. We've got potholes, we've got suspension crunchy dips, we've got collapsing underground layers underneath the asphalt, and the city has put up dip sides, okay? If we can't get Miami straightened out and smoothed out so that it isn't a motocross track on the way to and from the city, I don't see any reason why we, at this time, need to approve an annexation that's going to bring eventually more people, more traffic, and more road damage. That's my concern.
Thank you, Fernando. Anybody else here up front? Move back, move back, sir, yep.
That subdivision has covenants.
Oh, sorry, name and address, please.
Sorry, Jeff.
Jack, can you say your name and address again? I know you already said one, but...
It's Jack Heine, H-E-I-N-E, 217 Sage Drive. That subdivision has covenants. Covenants are filed with the county. They're a legal document. So my concern is, one, is this new development going to have reasonable covenants that control how people live in, how they take care of their lots, et cetera, okay? The other thing is, is that that subdivision put in quite a bit of money into their irrigation system. We want to make sure that the new development preserves that irrigation system. I haven't heard anything about that. I realize it's a little early in the planning, but if that consideration is not carried out, then we, the subdivision, have to have a little discussion with the Public Power Valley Waters Users Association and the Corps of Engineers, because that system has been approved by those bodies.
Thanks, Jack. Sir?
Bruno Reiners, 3241 Hollyway. Some of my concerns are, Fernando said, I won't repeat, but you already covered that. What I'm thinking, they're thinking that maybe, the rumor is they're going to plow through somewhere cul-de-sacs in our subdivision. And to me, that would be tremendous, that'd be horrible. That's why I bought my house, is that I could have to get a cul-de-sac. And that just wouldn't be right. And I hope, you know, 95% of the people coming on point are 65-plus, okay? So I just think they need to consider the safety of that community. And I think that community, the majority of the people there, paid their dues, we shouldn't be treated like this. And I'm also concerned about 6750 being continued to extend to Highway 50, and that would run right along alongside the borderline there on the subdivision. But I tell you, I'm already looking a place to move to if I have to. I used to dream about living in Montrose. I lived in John's, I was a juvenile crasher, 41 years. Used to drive a few years. Full officer, look at those sand lawns. I'm going, yay, I'm going to be there someday. I'm finally here, two years, and now this shit's happening, all my friends. So I just hope that you guys consider some of those things down the road, and maybe those things you grow out later, so I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Ron.
I'm Anne Holmes, 241 Sage Drive, and I live in Columbine Point. I'm also within hearing distance of Johnson Elementary School, and I'm a retired schoolteacher. I am very concerned, I understand Johnson Elementary is already full, and if they are planning on putting family housing in this neighborhood, where are they going to go to school? As I know that was the last bullet item of what the planning commission is concerned about, is school density, but you've already approved a plot from that miles on the subside of Miami Road in this vicinity to bring in 450 homes, I think was the number. And where are these kids going to go to school?
Thanks, Anne. Sir?
My name's Rick Linsky, 3217 Hollyway. I'm going to talk mainly about the zoning. I disagree with the zoning. I feel R1B is best suited for the neighborhood.
Which one, I'm sorry?
R1B.
R1?
Yeah, the next one, small estate area. The reason I feel that way is, if the zoning map's correct or I write it right, I'm only finding four other subdivisions in the entire city mantras that are zoned R1B. There's plenty of B2, or, excuse me, R2, R3 zoning, things of that nature. The four I found are Vista San Juan off of Woodgate Road. That goes back to late 70s, early 80s. San Juan Heights subdivision off of Niagara Road. That would be like Downey and Nichols Way back in there to the south side. That's about mid 70s, give or take. Bell Haven Estates off of 6700 Road. I believe that's around early 2000s. So you know, it's 20 years roughly. And the last one I found was the work subdivision off of... Actually, the Woodgate, that's roughly the two, early 2000s. Going back to what Jack said about the irrigation and water, I feel that's very important. That's one of the big sellers for our lots in our subdivision. We spent, roughly, we spent our own agency money on that several years ago to fix some of our problems with the lawn pumps clogging up the filters and stuff, and that was... Somebody else might correct me if I don't know. I think it was about 18,000 at the time. We went in with the water users to get that taken care of. We actually hired them and paid them out, it was cheaper that way. So I've been in Columbine Point since 2009, about the second or third house on the block, so I just feel R1B would be my favorite for the neighborhood.
Thanks, Rick.
I was 3240 Hollyway. Been in the subdivision for about 10 years now, carrying that. And for all intents and purposes, we are a senior community, as you can look out at the crowd here, mostly seniors and pretty much retired. I'm concerned about the additional noise and the additional light pollution that we're going to see as a result of having another community like us there. Also, a question, whether or not we're going to have, is this new community that's going to be adjacent to us, are they going to have water rights? We're already having trouble with our irrigation water. And if we have that community have water rights and using the same water that we're trying to access right now, that's going to put a major amount of power on our... As it's already been said before, R2 is not compatible with our present subdivision. Our present subdivision is R1, and I'd like to see it seen that way.
Sir, in the back of the hat, yep.
Tim Anderson, 3208 Hollyway. We're one of the people that are going to be mostly impacted by this. I have a question, then I'd like to make a statement. Could you define "single-family" for me?
Jim, we will, we'll have the C staff give you a sense of definition.
That would be a question, like, what does that mean? Does that mean modulars, stick buildings? Okay, the other thing is, somebody, they've already brought up, people that walk that community know that that's a primarily elderly community. There is safety concerns with accessing our current cul-de-sacs and just opening that up. So that, for annexation purposes, that's another, that's another, that's a real concern, noise. And then, it was brought up, our irrigation system comes down through there the water. If you access that very much more, we won't have any water. So I think, I think the planning commission needs to look at that as the impact in that whole community, and, because we're to the point where we're wearing all of our days now. So, so they go forward with that, we may be totally wiped out, I'm not sure about that. Also, I'd like to bring up wildlife issues. If you look down behind, the whole row of houses there, there's ponds, there's wildlife, there's what I would consider personally wetlands. Okay, that may also be impacted by more noise, pollution, whatever. Also, the access of water coming down into that area, so that would be a whole nother study that would be needed. And then, my general comment is, the impact on the residents there is going to be monumental if something decides, well, we're just going to take your streets that are already there, we're just going to run more cars through it. I don't know who thought that one up, okay? I mean, that gives, that gives a residence there...
One more minute.
Okay. That gives a residence. I mean, that isn't any consideration whatsoever for anything or anybody, which is, we want to do what we want to do, nobody's talked to us, we don't even know about that issue. So I think that's something for the planning commission to, you know, the quality of life issues that you consider. I know that way down on the bottom of the scale, but those are all real concerns. So I would, again, definitions of wildlife, I mean, there's quite a few concerning irrigation. Thank you.
Here you go. Sir, right here.
My name is Richard Prowlitt, 3000 by Drive. I'm a former land developer on Front Range, and my initial reaction to your plan here is that we're dealing with 35 acres, which is a very small parcel in terms of land development, maybe not for Montrose, but what you're going to find is you're going to have to force a high density on this property to make it viable from the development standpoint. And I don't think our subdivision is compatible with Columbine Point with a very high density development to the... It would make more sense to have more continuity and better flow between the two subdivisions in terms of lots, I just...
Thank you, Richard. Sir, right here. Yep.
Adam Monroe, 3241 Hollyway. I'm going to dovetail on the zoning to be R1B. So low-density mantras has four different considerations: R1, R1A, R1B, and R2. And so my consideration is, I'd like to kind of present a little bit about Mantras' understanding of what low-density means. So growth, it happens, development happens, I get it, I'm in real estate, I understand it, I've sold and bought inside Columbine, it will drastically impact what happens there, I'll get to that in a second. Smart growth is different. You guys are all on this commission for some reason, to help Mantras to grow in a smart way. Our heritage has been, even our emblem has agriculture on it. We go up here, it's all based on countryside and agriculture. Obviously, how do we preserve that? So how do we have an intentional eye toward that, toward our past? So what does low-density objective mean? I would say more space, larger-sized lots. R1B inside of our code says semi-rural, so we have an understanding, even with R1B, our subdivision, Columbine Point, that we want to make it semi-rural. However, like Rick said, it is a drastic minority in our town. R1B is not a sought-after developer zoning. There are only, there are only a couple, and they're all built out. All future developers are not seeking R1B. So my proposition is, why not make this a higher priority for new development, to preserve the future rural-style, country-style feel of our community? With Columbine Point, my dad can talk to this as one of the developers, and Tom...
One more minute.
Dr. Mannig and some other doctors came toward it as R1. Two was the initial, it switched to R1B. It was primarily why it's been successful, because of the R1B change. I'm proposing there to be something that is, the actual name is synergy builders, why not have there be a synergy of zoning? From R1B to R1B, and that preserves not only the homogeneous idea of rural countryside development of Columbine Point, but it has a nice flow, what we like to see as the objective for low-density in our community.
Thank you, Adam. Yep, sir?
I'm Tom Chaney, 2500 Columbine Point. I was one of the original developers for Columbine Point. I agree with Adam, that you want to carry forward a recommendation for R1B for this new, for this 35 acres. In a way, this tract that under consideration is wedded to Columbine Point, through Ivy. Ivy Road is one of the main accesses, there's only two accesses to Columbine Point, Ivy's one off of 6700 Road. Ivy winds its way through Columbine Point, and in order to facilitate development of that 35 acres in the future, we did agree to stub it out to the boundary of this 35 acres. Well, that being the case, any development that occurs on this 35 acres is going to be served a pretty, maybe 50% by access through Ivy. Now, Ivy was designed for a R1B development, and we knew that Miami was inadequate. Miami is also very important. I agree with the comments that were made about Miami. We've got real, Miami goes all the way through to San Juan, San Juan bypass. So this, that makes Miami, and it goes all the way to the east and connects with the highway. So Miami is a major, or potentially a major, well, I don't say major, a minor access.
One minute, sir. One more minute.
Okay. Somebody commented about the irrigation. Realize that the irrigation line that comes through this property and also the property further to the east is a lateral owned by the water users. So it's under control of water users. Nobody can interfere with that right-of-way, with that irrigation line, without going through the water.
Sir, any comments for us?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom. Next.
Largest consideration is your density is way too high. Your sub.
Hold on, sir. Name and address, please.
Jim Renfro, 2400 Columbine Lane.
Thank you.
Montrose, Colorado. And I'm saying, this is our subdivision, can you imagine the size of houses in this subdivision adjoining this? You know, I'm, I'm a developer, I'm setting up my developer, 35 acres and a mile of streets in Montrose. But, your density, you've got to get that density, 7,500 square feet, that's like English Gardens. English Gardens next to a rural subdivision, makes no sense, I'll give you the flat, I'm thinking about doubling the house on this. Is that what you're going to do? I need a similar.
All right. Might as well get the whole Renfro plan.
I'm John Renfro.
Just address John.
7606700 Road. John Renfro. He's the better-looking one, I'm not. Obviously, you guys know me, have seen me, and other stuff like that, a lot of other stuff kind of going through. Just some stuff I just want you to kind of just, I want to highlight, just for the planning commission. First of all, thank you guys for doing what you're doing, I know it's a really hard and difficult job. The road spill, we're going to go through. Doesn't happen all the time, as you guys know, when we're going through and doing it. I'm really disappointed that the applicant is not here in order to kind of see this. Because it puts you guys in an awkward position, with the applicant not being here in order to kind of feel, sort of the questions are able to kind of go through, so I, I, I don't know if that's a postponement, or you're trying to get the applicant here, or other stuff like that to kind of go through. Second thing is, is that, I bring up traffic, love traffic when we're going through and doing that. Love the smile. So, I, I just don't know, we're doing the, the application, other stuff like that, if they did the traffic study, definitely that's part of the subdivision aspect when they're going through, or is the annexation? It seems like it should be part of the annexation aspect, more than anything else, especially when it comes to the density, when it comes to the roads and the safety issues that we're kind of going through. The last, and I stress this, and you guys know we do a lot of real estate, is I try to spend a lot of time with developers, and spend time with neighborhood people, to have a meeting with the people prior to meeting with you guys, to go out and do that. To the best of my knowledge, that has not happened. They haven't gone through, and that's putting you guys in kind of an awkward position when we're going through and doing that, I just, I, I want you guys to kind of hear that, and hopefully, you can encourage that, and you can talk to applicants, future applicants, when we're going forward with it.
Thanks, John. Where are we at? Let's start outside here.
My name is Gary Dahl, and I live on 3241, which will border this project. And, I guess when I moved in there, and I still enjoy the farm that's next door, I knew that sometime it was going to be developed. And, I'm okay with that, as long as it kind of matches what we have. But, I'll also say, I've heard a couple interesting things in here, so I don't know who's really, who's really who here is, is, when I bought my property, nobody said, 3241, that cul-de-sac was buttered up to potentially go through. I have a neighbor, and our properties joined together, and so, my home is worth approximately $500,000, we'll just use that as a number. Well, when you look it up, houses in a cul-de-sac in that area are worth 10 to 20% more. So, if you open up that, you're going to devalue my house. There's five homes on each side going up that street, we're all seniors, and that's going to cost us a lot of money. That's like a half a million dollars lost in that whole street. So, I'm not sure what game is going on by people saying and handing out deals that this company is this way, and this, we're going to be different this way, is this is an annex hearing. And, what I'm after truly is, is I'm okay with them city annexing, I'm actually hoping that they do annex. And, but I kind of like to see it with a green zone, something that protects us a little bit, something that matches us, that's fine. But, I think we have to, when we look in this room tonight, we've got to make sure that we're all doing the right thing, and that we're not hurting seniors. Miami was an excellent point. Seven o'clock to eight o'clock in the morning, anybody can go and stand on Miami next to our subdivision, Columbine Point, and you'll see old people trying to navigate, I'm 67 this month.
What?
Navigate, navigate down that street with the traffic the way it is, they need to actually to do something with that, to make sure there, there's safety issues there. We have people coming from far away, from the other Columbine, that walks through our division. We walk their division. We're all 65, we've had break-ins in our neighborhood. Let's not do a third access point. We're very good as seniors up till 12 o'clock and 4 o'clock in the morning, but in-between, we're not worth a hoot. So, it is, is, we need to make sure that this community stays safe, and I don't lose 10 to 20% of value, and I'm not really sure what the game afoot is here tonight.
Thanks, Gary. Next, sir.
Yes, my name's Rick Otten, I live on the end of Ivy also, 3240 Ivy Drive, across the street from Gary. And, as he said, our, our properties are bought in that cul-de-sac. I looked at my plat this week to be sure, and yes, his property and my property do meet in that cul-de-sac. The only thing I want to say is, we, we're what, R1B zoning in our subdivision. I don't care what they, they're going to build next door, I mean, that's inevitable. However, it should be R1B, not R2. Let's, let's continue the continuity of our subdivision into the new subdivision, and as someone else said tonight, it's too bad the developer isn't here to hear this, because I don't think that's what's coming.
Thanks, Rick. Yep, ma'am.
My name's Mary Beth Renfro, 3241 Hollyway. As a native born Coloradan, and having spent my entire life in the state of Colorado, holds a special place in my heart, I believe Montrose in particular is a very beautiful place. To quote directly from the City of Montrose Police website, quote, "Montrose is an irresistible playground for those who want to live in a place that complements an outdoor lifestyle." While being a forward-thinking, fast-growing community that is rich with opportunity, Montrose has managed to retain a strong connection to its rural agricultural roots. City leaders are intent on building for a prosperous future while working to preserve the Montrose lifestyle. So, I ask, how is the City of Montrose acting as a, quote, "forward-thinking community"? How is the city, quote, "working to preserve the Montrose lifestyle"? I would like to propose that the city reconsider the zoning of this parcel of land. It currently is a welcome to the eastern corridor for the City of Montrose. This land connects well with the City of Montrose tourism website, that boasts of Montrose being a beautiful western Colorado community. I propose that this parcel of land be denied the density abuse for which they are seeking approval. In my opinion, it would better serve the mission statement in the City of Montrose to preserve this land as open space. I realize that is extreme, and maybe not possible. Once it is zoned for housing, there is no way to return it to the beautiful land that represents western Colorado. There is already an enormous tract of land to the south that has been taken over by development. We do not need another development in this area, so please make decisions that do not ruin our community as a whole, and we be forward-thinking and plan with careful consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Beth. Get on the line, I thought I saw somebody else. Ma'am?
Yes, I'm just going to add some more numbers to what everybody else is saying here, because I'm, you're about, you're.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, 2941 Ivy Drive.
Your name?
Sharon, Howard, and Kevin.
Sharon, go ahead.
Okay, so like, a year and a half ago, we spent 100, or $565,000 to buy a 2,000-square-foot house, that's where we wanted to live. It's quiet, it's peaceful, the streets are nice, everybody in that neighborhood has been awesome. So, to find out a year and a half later that we could be this thoroughfare is really making me mad. But, no, it is really, really disheartening, and I truly hope that that doesn't happen, because, again, I don't want to lose the value of my property. That's our retirement home, that's why we picked there. So, I want you all, if you would please, to consider that, because seriously, this is not, this is not just an easy thing that everybody around there is going to lay down and take. So, please consider that.
Thank you, Sharon.
Hi, my name's Alan Abbott, 3017 Paintbrush Way, just moved there six months ago, so I'm not too sure about the address yet. But, I, I've lived in the valley for about 40, 50 years, and I don't know how many remember when English Gardens was the neatest, newest, greatest subdivision come to Montrose, that's the edge of town. And, you go through there now, and it's still a nice subdivision, but you can see what's happening, it's kind of dying from the outside in. And, when we moved out here, I'd like to see that kind of preserved, because we've got one subdivision that's real close to us, it's like, built out of a company from Grand Junction, tract housing style tracts that come in, and I'm thinking this other, you know, probably be the same thing. So, what I'd hate to see is for us to be surrounded by these smaller, higher-density subdivisions, and then, there's a chance of it kind of dying from the outside, because it's not protected, it's not built with the same style houses into probably the same customers. So, like I say, remembering English Gardens, it was the greatest thing that came out of Montrose for a while, but I wouldn't want to buy anything there, and I have nothing against it, I don't, so, thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Is anybody else in the back there, or some other fans? Yep.
Rhonda Johnson, 3233 Hollyway. And, I just want to address something that Chuck brought up a little earlier, and that's light pollution. Because of our proximity to the Grand, what is it, Black Canyon, Black Canyon of the Gannison, in our covenants, we have very restricted regulations on outdoor lighting. We're not allowed to keep our lights on all night long, they have to be a certain, no more than 60 watts, that kind of thing, because Black Canyon is, has been designated since 2015, a, an international dark sky area, dark sky park, actually. And, because of our proximity to the Black Canyon, I'm concerned about the light pollution that a higher-density subdivision is going to bring. And, not only that, that's even further east, that's closer to the Black Canyon, and I just think that the planning commission needs to keep that into consideration when you're approving any type of building, whether it's business, shopping centers, residential areas, that once that dark sky is gone, it's gone forever. And, Black Canyon is one of six in the state of Colorado designated dark sky areas. And, there are only 33 areas in the whole world that have been designated dark sky areas, that the communities and the parks try to protect that night sky, so that people can stargaze, and they call them astrotourists, they go to different places because they want to see the sky. And, so, I would just ask you to please.
One more.
Please, take that into consideration, not only for this proposed subdivision, but for all the growth that's on the east side of town, because we're losing, we're losing our dark sky here.
Thanks, Rhonda. Thank you, ma'am.
Kevin Howard, 2941 Ivy Drive. I'm going to repeat a little bit here, but we've, we've been in the neighborhood for about a year or so, and looking out our front window, there's a continuous parade of people, you know, walking up and down the street with, with their dogs, and, and, you know, it's a great neighborhood to be in for remaining active, and of course, as a retirement kind of a community, you know, that's important to everybody here. And, there's only one sidewalk on one side of the street, and a lot of folks walk through the neighborhood on Ivy Drive in particular, heading down to the mailboxes and so forth, with, you know, out, out in the street essentially. And, if we're opening up any of these cul-de-sacs to make this a thoroughfare, there's going to be some serious safety concerns here. So, we really need to, you know, consider those things as the development happens. And additionally, you know, it's been brought up already, but the, the developer not being here, you know, is, is a big black mark in, in my mind. If, if they don't care enough to be at these type of meetings to, you know, to be able to answer these questions, to hear the input from the, from the community and so forth, in my opinion, I hope the planning commission listens more to the community that's going to be adjacent to this than just, you know, accepting the proposal from the developer. So, thank you for having the hearing, and.
Thanks, Kevin. Anybody else in the back? Are you clear of some math that you guys put forward? You said, minimum lot size, as proposed under R2, would be 7,500 square feet. Can somebody here give me that as a percentage of an acre?
We will.
And then, the other thing was 35-foot height limit, is that within the realm of two sto-, of two stories?
Yep, we'll get you both those.
Thank you.
Yep. Was there anybody else, public comment? Sir?
John Ross, 3233 Ivy Drive, and two houses from the development, some of the neighbors spoken. Access to the subdivision is, hasn't been discussed. It's got two accesses, native. It's probably able to be on Miami. People don't like that, so they're going to look at Ivy Drive, because it covers up the west, the straight shot. Miami now is kind of a racetrack for the young folks, going to test their hot rods, and they turn over on that curve out there. So, but, if we, if there's subdivision and open those cul-de-sacs, please, I want you guys to look at that map, there's three cul-de-sacs. And, if you open those cul-de-sacs, and you bring that traffic, race cars, if you please, off of Miami down through there, you, you raise the issues that these guys talk about, senior citizens, you can see how fast I'm going. So, and the discussion that you had on the zoning, I'm not quite a part of that, but it raises a lot of questions in my mind, and I would, I think you need a little more information about that acreage, and how, how it's doing this Columbine Point. I'd encourage you to table this expectation, until you get a little more information, call me around, take a look at what's going on out there, if you're pleased with the decision.
Thanks, John. Ma'am?
Janet Eckert, 124515750, and I seem to always be the one that brings up the bad corner out there, so I'm not going to be silent tonight. So, the, their west line of the proposed subdivision, it is in the comprehensive plan, that the 6750 Road would come from the highway all the way down over to Sunnyside. And, I live on that corner, and it's a very dangerous corner, most of the traffic that drives on it does not stay on its side of the road. Matt Miles even agreed that it's a bad corner, and when he did his subdivision on the south side of East Miami, he promised me that he was not going to cut 6750 Road through to Sunnyside, which he put on his plat, which was approved, because of the bad corner. So, I'd just like to call it to your attention, and whatever moves forward on this subdivision, that if you're going to have the subdivision come out, the line that is bordering their subdivision, that 6750 Road would be dumped out right into this bad corner, which over the years, I grew up out there, since I was 10, I've been out there a long time, and my dad, and before me, has seen many, many car accidents on that corner, people go in the ditch, we had one just this fall, a lady flipped over. And, so, I just want to call your attention to that corner, if it's going to be a dump-out point from this new subdivision, it's a bad idea. I know Matt Miles on the subdivision to the south, he was crossing the two, he brought Hillcrest. And his intention is to bring Hill Street through where I live, bring it all the way through to Miami, but it won't be on this corner, it'll be somewhere to the east. And so it would seem to make sense if you're going to dump this subdivision out, if he's going to bring Hill Street to just keep it going. So I would just like to call you respectfully that there is a really bad corner out there.
One minute left.
And there's like thirty-five acres, there's going to be a lot of homes. And just to bring it up again, because I seem to be harping on it, but it really is a public safety concern on that corner. Seen lots of accidents. So I just want to call it to your attention that when you're looking at the plats that come forward, that that sixty-seven, fifty road, and there's already an agriculture road where the farmers use it right there, but it's very dangerous. So I'd just like to call that to your attention.
Anybody else over here? No? Yep, go ahead.
Ann, Ann, thirty-two, oh eight, Ivy Drive. And I would like to just ask you that you would take into consideration everything you've heard tonight and have another meeting prior to approving the zoning and require that the developer be here so that he can hear what our concerns are. And maybe it'll, it'll make an impact, maybe it won't, but at least to give us, who are going to be impacted by this, a voice. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yep.
Karen, Carrie, thirty-two, forty, Holly Way. We have a couple of sacks that they can offer. We have a beautiful lawn there, trees and hundreds of dollars of landscaping, but that's minor. What, what would be destroyed as a lifestyle? We've all bought money in this retirement community and we have it, wonderful neighbors, it's quiet, a lot of us live in pain. Anybody that's a senior knows that comes with a terrible. But a lot of us taking naps. Can you imagine, two hundred houses with little kids and cars and dogs and people coming right down our nice quiet, well, winding street? Not to mention when it's being built over a period of years, trucks with debris dropping nails and I've heard of this happening in other subdivisions. My main question for you is this, why do the two subdivisions even have to be connected? They both got access to Miami, find other accesses, but not through our retirement communities in consideration of all of us that have lived this long. Please just keep us informed, don't forget us. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, going twice.
I just had one for company.
Yep.
Can I give some kind of a promise from you guys that we are going to have another meeting and we will have the developer here to answer questions so that we can make sure that our concerns are publicly voiced and the developer understand what we're coming from.
All right, Jack, I will address your concern when we close the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. All right, one once, one twice.
The engineer gave me something on the previous thing, what Matt Miles thinks. So there's nine ingresses and egresses per household, is that right?
Nine.
Nine?
You can't address the, sorry, just wait a second.
Nine people in and out, every household, that's crazy.
So we're going to close the public comment portion for tonight's agenda. So, yeah, so basically from here on out, we, we are going to take obviously everything you guys just threw at us, we'll discuss it up here, we're going to talk to staff again, we're going to ask them questions, they're going to provide answers to some of them, maybe all of them, just depending. And then to address, Jack, your question or your concern, it is an option that we have as the planning commission to either accept, deny, or move to continue this meeting to another time. That's based on our vote up here whether we decide to do any one of those things. So no, I can't promise you that we're going to do that. We will discuss it up here and we're going one of those three ways tonight, either yes, no, or we're going to continue, okay? And so hopefully, all of our votes at the end of this agenda item, it's, it should be obvious to you which way we are leaning individually based on the discussion that we have up here, okay? That's the whole point of us debating and talking for the remainder of the meeting, is to make it clear that why we're either in support or not, or why we think we need to continue the meeting, okay? Do us a favor, please keep the outbursts and discussion amongst yourselves to a minimum or not at all, preferably, while we get this part of the meeting done. And then at the end of this meeting, just as a reiteration, just so you do know, we are providing a recommendation to city council. So if we were to approve this, it goes before city council as a, the planning commission recommends that the zoning gets approved. City council will also hear this agenda item. So unlike some of the things that we discuss here where this is the be all and end all, this is not the case with a initial zoning, so. All right, so staff-
Can I start?
Uh, hold on, so, let me just walk through. I think, I think let's, first of all, let's just put it out there, for all of you that have concerns about the actual building of the house, the design of the subdivision, things like that, you're all right, the applicant is not here. And so we can't have them answer those questions. Sometimes applicants have a design already, sometimes they don't at this stage, and it really is up to them to, if they have a design, whether they want to convey that to us at this stage or not. They don't have to, because that's not part of this stage of the development process. But just in my opinion, I agree with most of you that it is unfortunate that they're not here to convey some of those concerns. As far as the design of any future building though, Scott, would you please talk to us about, I think the point's fair, if it's not the same developer that has developed Columbine Point or Columbine Park, would the city like force Ivy to go through another development or into another development?
So that one's, so from the original plat, Ivy was, so I think there was some misinformation that all three were going to punch through or have you. From the original plat, the only one that was envisioned to punch through was Ivy. Whether they would use that in their layout or not is unknown at this point. I think if they came to the city and, so the two places this would come up again, so initially they'll come before you with a sketch plan, which is kind of their just general layout and that's where they want feedback on those kind of things before they go into detailed design, waste money, you know, doing detailed design on something that may be a non-starter. So that goes forward at sketch plan and then again at the preliminary plat, but that's the point of the, the public comment to help. You know, if, if they do plan to make that connection or they need it for egress or fire, which don't know, again, we haven't seen any plans, they haven't done any design, and so we don't know if they intend to use Ivy. If they legally want to, it's, that's how that neighborhood is intended to be stuffed over. They probably could as long as the traffic study and all that would support it, there's all these things they have to prove in order to do that. But again, that's all completely speculative at this point. We don't know if they intend to make that connection or not. If there's subdivision being made to work without it and works for fire, you know, for traffic purposes and for fire access and all that, you know, again, it's, it's up to the designer. If they were, they wanted to, we don't have any legal basis to not allow them to use Ivy. But again, that, you know, comes down to planning commission as well and some of the public feedback and even council at that point. But again, that's, that's all future process, speculative piece. I can speak to Hill Street a little bit, that kind of plays in here too. So the, the comp plan, when Columbine Point was originally made, had Hill Street going right along the eastern side of Columbine Point. And that was going, so Ivy was going to connect to another minor arterial going all the way up right along the eastern boundary of Columbine Point. Since then, I think some of the feedback from Matt Miles' development, Hill Street has shifted east. This is the latest layout and we reflected this in the annexation agreement with them on this. Let me steal this here. So, and I think this is a positive neighborhood, there's kind of two things that plan to Hill Street is, it will go to Miami, it's uncertain whether it would go to all the way up to the highway. C dot has minimum spacing on their intersections and what they'll allow up at the highway. So if C dot wouldn't allow this to go all the way to the highway, it wouldn't make sense too and Miami would be even lower for Hill Street than they were this first year too, using the Mountain West or down to the new sixty-seven hundred extension. But this is, what's crossing north, which is a property immediately south of Miami that, you know, Matt Miles is working on developing. And here's the residential area at the southern end, this is Hill Street, and then Hill Street comes in, this is the bend in Miami right here. So this is different than the comp plans, this, this was back, again, this is the same road network that was in the original comp plan when Columbine East was built. This is Columbine, or Columbine Point, sorry, again, a long way, Columbine neighborhood here. This was the extension of Hill Street at that time. Again, you know, these, these maps are meant to kind of indicate there's going to be a connection from here to here. Doesn't exactly dictate where. Recognizing that that would be right along the backs of these homes, recognizing the safety concerns on this corner, that's what's driven this alignment to shift. And then based on the subdivision process, their traffic engineer recommended the location here, so that's why that has shifted. So I think that takes some pressure off of obviously traffic noise here. And again, whether that would even go up to the highway is under term, but again, that all gets worked out at subdivision phase, once they have traffic engineer or they know what the actual building is going to be.
Thank you, Scott. William or Scott, your one, can you please give us, and this is again, so we don't have any plans, what is the, at seventy-five hundred square feet minimum lot size? How many units is that? And what's the difference between that and R1B?
So, yeah, to answer the question about how many acres is that, seventy-five hundred square feet is zero point one seven acres? Thirty-five point five, so the overall subdivision is thirty-five point five acres. Usually you lose about twenty-five percent of that acres to rights of way, retention ponds, open space, so say that multiple by point seven five, divided by seventy-five hundred, the max that you could fit in there by code most likely is around one fifty-five. Typically, we don't see seventy-five hundred square foot lots, those are pretty tight particles though, so I would say it's likely to come out less than that, but again, that would be speculative.
I think so.
So, yeah, it's all speculative. Even that number, you know, the assumption on twenty-five percent is speculative.
Well, all of this, I just want to remind everyone, this is not a subdivision hearing, it is the rezoning. And so we do not know if Ivy is going to get, it's all speculative. So we have to be very careful when we speculate because I heard a few statements tonight like, you know, I'm going to lose my criticism and they're going to plow through it. Those are hearsay and things that are not yet at all planned or even in a drawing board yet. So I just want you to keep that in mind. But I also want you to be, to, to really know how great it is that you are here today because this is the beginning of the process and you're most likely depending on what happens next, but can come back and you have many opportunities to do this. So keep doing that because it is important, this is why we're here, is to hear your concern and really know, you know, where you are in the community. I do feel that that hillside that you just pointed out, thank you for that. I mean, it's a great win for your community that hillside was moved that way. So I really think that it's important to be here today and I wanted to thank everyone for taking the time. And this might take a little time tonight, but you're more than welcome to stick around and, and know what's happening because it is important to be in the know in what we do. So thank you for being here.
We can follow, I, I just wanted to see if we could get the contrast with one. Yeah, if we could get the R1B number, I know it's speculative, but just that, what that.
It looks very much like this.
How big is the lot size?
This is a R1B, this is very different, that's what Mr. Grandt was trying to tell us. This is twice as much minimum. If we do the seventy-five hundred minimum, it can be up to three times this, am I right, Scott?
We will do that math. So R1B, the minimum lot size is third.
It's a quarter of an acre?
Third.
That's what we have in Columbine Point.
It's double.
And the thirty-five foot ceiling?
Yeah, and then, and then thirty-five feet is that all the, all the residential zones in Montrose could have thirty-five feet.
I know, but is that adequate number for a second story?
Yes.
It is. So if you have a small, see a smaller footprint because of a smaller lot, the only way to get living space-
Yes.
Is develop.
Yes, same here. Yep. Sorry, guys, but the public comment portion of tonight's agenda item is-
There's questions.
I, I know, but as far as how we run meetings, I can't have you guys asking them after we close the public comment portion.
So if you were to do a third acre, same assumption of twenty-five percent loss, eighty minutes, I mean, not thirty-five, twenty-five.
How many?
Eight.
Eighty, so roughly, it's roughly double.
Eighty.
Okay, so. All right, thanks. Thanks, Scott.
Could I ask a question on the cul-de-sac? You know, those cul-de-sacs do not have homes at the end, if I recall.
They do.
Right about, yeah, you're- He can't knock the-
Down the terminal land.
Correct. Who owns that land at the end? I do.
I do.
So, so.
The property depends on-
The plat record.
No, this is their property goes all the way.
So if they don't sell the house, they don't sell that property, they can't school.
Well, I mean-
Isn't the front there on that?
So, yeah, let me clarify now.
Yeah, how about Scott talk here?
Guys, please, I don't want to gavel the ones I'm banging.
The city will not condemn property to make a connection between neighborhoods. However, the existing plat has a right of way dedication for Ivy Road to go, and that's, and that's why I said that's the only one.
So, so you-
Again, if they could take advantage of that, if they wanted to take advantage of that, they have legal access in that property to do so, based on the original final plat. Again, not to say they will. The other cul-de-sacs are private property, this, the city will not, I can completely say, the city will not condemn a privately owned, the properties wrap around the cul-de-sac and so there's a little sliver there, like a do not cross sliver, which is a strategy, that's why they set the roof that way. That would have to go across private property, it's, so you do not have a right.
Scott, maybe Ben, Helene? Hold on, is there?
Or, yeah.
I just saw him.
Yep, yep, that's the one. That's our, yeah, sounds like you're involved, so yeah, our standards.
All right, thanks, Scott. All right, uh, one of the things that we not talked about, okay, yeah, so, I'll see.
I, I was, I can get maybe clarification from Scott and maybe if Ben would be involved too about what the process would be determined other road, whether Ivy goes through or not. So if, does that depend, Scott, at all about, you mentioned, say, if a developer, if a developer came to you and said, I would like to move Ivy through to connect it to my development. If, when the city is making that decision, if that's a decision they have right to make, are you looking at whether that is necessary for egress or for any sort of technical safety specifications? And if so, would that depend on the density of the development or not? Or that's completely his use by right to say, as long as it doesn't harm any conditions you have around safety, that that road can go through, go. Yeah, it's a great question to see about. Kind of get into a gray area, so as a city staff, we have to work within the confines of the code. We can't tell somebody they can't do something if we don't like it. That's what codes are for, is to make it standardized across the board. That being said, we very often, and I think successfully, almost I'd say on every project that comes through, try and work with them if we have known neighborhood concerns or issues. So you know, work with them and say, if you don't need to use this and it works otherwise, and typically that's a, you know, making it convenient for the neighborhoods to have a good way around, but also emergency access, if EMS is adamant that they need, for whatever reason, access in this area, you know, we can't compromise public safety in the neighborhood and everything's a trade out, everything's balanced, but-
I think it was Congress, right?
Congress is a good example.
Yep.
So we, we try and work with the applicant to come to a solution that's kind of a win-win for everybody and that works. If, so, yeah, you know, so we try and steer it, but we can't, we can't dictate, we legally can't. If they have a right to that road, it's applied right of way and they need it for their development and we can't say no. And again, you know, when it comes to planning commission, they can try and steer, especially at the sketch plan phase, and that's the whole point of it, is to try and guide their development before it gets too deep. And then even up to the council level, they can try and steer. But again, there are legal bounds that we can work with them. And because we, if we don't, they call it arbitrary accretion, and we can speak to that. Well, for, I'll bring us back to what we're doing tonight, we're not designing a street system or a subdivision.
We're not designing a street system or a subdivision. This is a zoning area only. We can consider matters that affect the health, safety, and welfare. And forced traffic is one of those. That's a valid concern. But getting into the street design isn't too far a people, I would say, for the purpose of the area at the time.
Yeah, I think. I think knowing whether it would certainly go through or not does bear on them.
Well, I think, I think the big thing to know is that there are multiple phases. Once there's a design where you all can be back here, we'll be up here, and we can pick apart the design until either you're satisfied, we're satisfied, the developer's satisfied. It can take all night, it can take multiple meetings. And those are the meetings that if and when a development occurs next to your neighborhood, that all the, all these actual concerns, or many of the concerns that you have tonight, would be addressed. So one of the things that the zoning does impact because of the density that we either approve or disapprove, the concern about Miami, Scott, can you talk to us about, you know, the city's, not application, but the city's presentation to us recommended that we approve R2. So you talked about you're going through the process of max density there at 150 home, 155 homes potentially. If the city's having trouble keeping Miami maintained now, how does that, how does that work? Because we do have these other developments to the south that are coming online too.
And while you do that, can you pull up the GIS map? Because I want to point out something too when we're talking about this and on that subject. Because I want everybody to see this. So the zoning layer only, that's all I need, if you don't mind. Because as we talk about this, I think it's important to understand what's around, surrounding you everywhere. As we talk about zoning, a zoning map makes sense so we can really understand where your whole neighborhood is heading, even things you can't see as of today. Because, you know, when we talk about Ivy, you know, in the original plan, it's made to go through, well, nobody knew that obviously, right? So I think what I want to point out to everybody I'm talking about Miami is that we have this R3 here, we have this R2 here, R2 here, which means the traffic already here is increasing from the impact of those, right? So as we're looking at these higher density, our job is really to know what do we want to watch, match. And I'd love to hear later about the city on why we are pushing to maybe R2. But it makes a lot of sense to be R1B, not only on a traffic zone, because this is R2 already used by right, nothing we can change about, right? And it's not developed yet. This is R2 and we're working on the street here, and so this is going to be a better access most likely to happen soon. So what I'm saying is with all this growing, this might be happening in the future, and these things happening here, it increased the traffic already. Am I right?
Yeah, all development increases traffic, yes.
Right. So I'm curious on where we came up with the advice of R2 instead of R1B as the request of the developer, and I'm sorry because I just can't ask him. Is that what happened, Scott?
Yeah, so the, I mean, theoretically, any application, an applicant has the right to apply for any zoning district that they want. That being said, you know, one of the things that we always pull up with the presentation and saw tonight, we look at the future land use map. According to the future land use map, this area is designated as residential mixed density medium, which indicates that medium density zoning is appropriate for this area. The applicant is requesting a lower density. Furthermore, if you look to the north and the east there, that's obviously zone is B2, which is a highway commercial district. Even though it's called the commercial district, residential uses are allowed there, generally higher density is allowed there. And so the R2 designation here is somewhat of a buffer between this B2 zoning district that would allow for multifamily development or high density with some of the other surrounding lower density zones.
Thanks, Ray. So Scott, can you just talk about the impacts that if it were the density, the max density at R2, how does that impact Miami with everything else that's going on and apparently obviously there are current issues with Miami and how that might impact that?
Yeah, so there's three pieces to the traffic piece. One is the, you know, kind of your speculation of, oh, if he's built out to max density, what does that mean for the overall traffic? That isn't an annexation or a zoning thing, that's a subdivision thing. So when a subdivision comes in, they'll know the unit count from that, they'll know the trip generation. And I think your mention of nine trips per day, that's pretty typical for a single-family residence. It's trips per day, you know, not egress points or anything like that.
Times 155 homes?
Times 155.
1500 trips one.
With the rough math. So, so when that comes in, every subdivision, so the B2, the, you know, all those, as each one comes in, they would evaluate their traffic impact through a traffic impact study. And they would look at current and projected volumes for the major roadways and then their impact on those and then what that means for the overall network. So if they, you know, the, in a perfect world, you know, we get what we want, the reality is, you know, we might get what we need. Roads are very expensive and very hard to keep up on. Every community struggles with it from a tax standpoint. So, you know, bringing on additional homes, you know, bring sales tax or whatever. The city does not collect a property tax, there's not a straight revenue for us, you know, to the roads outside of what they spend at, you know, local shops and things of that sort of. So with, with housing in theory comes some incremental sales tax to help pay for those roads. The city is pretty serious about our street maintenance and they're throwing more money at it than we ever have. The problem is, it's taller, there's, you know, 50 million or so of street maintenance out there. And we're, you know, we're paying five to six million per year, which is again, better than the city's ever done, and that's something we're working on. So for the immediate piece, you know, the big dips down by the canal, that's part of this year's street rebuilds, we're rebuilding about a two, a 300 foot stretch through there. The remainder of Miami, so when any traffic study that comes in, they would need to demonstrate that the intersections and the road itself has capacity. You know, a two lane road can carry, it's a good example, it's like Ogden, you know, that's six, 7,000 vehicles a day. It lacks sidewalk facilities. That's why we're excited about the 6700 extension because that does, between that and Columbine Park, that gives a safe pedestrian pathway to the backbone system of our entire right of travel network. This kitchen and the exit, and the after-party roadway trap. So, you know, from a pedestrian standpoint, development is commended from a safety, as they would just, you know, tie onto that sidewalk network. And then from a vehicle standpoint, you know, the roads can handle six to 7,000 vehicles a day. Intersections, you know, as 6700 goes through, it'll be stop control on the sides. At some point, that'll get busy enough that it'll become a four-way stop. At some point, that'll get busy enough that that'll become a roundabout. That's what the city does, is work to stay ahead of those. We don't want to build a whole bunch of infrastructure for 1,000 vehicles a day. To build these arterial is about $1,500 or so. So they're pretty expensive. So the whole thing, you know, you're talking 15 million or so, pretty tall order, especially when you throw in property acquisition and stuff. So these things happen organically over time. Any development that comes and has to penetrate that, we can handle it. If they, you know, need turn lanes and things of that sort of on the front edge, they would be on the hook for that. And they help us work and identify any offset improvements that are needed to put into our capital plan to make it that the larger arterial network can stay ahead of the growth. That being said, you know, it feels busy, but it's a relatively low volume on Miami right now. They can't handle it. You know, there's the corner issues, that's, you know, people not paying attention when they drive and flying off that corner. That is a known issue, but that's pretty much any corner, when people on their phones these days, those issues exist. But I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. So the other, some of the other things that we have written down here, I think almost all of them fall under basically the same line of questioning we've been going down, which is, they're all going to be addressed if and when there's actually a development on this parcel. As part of the zoning though, or sorry, as part of the annexation, regardless of the zone, does the city work with private, like water users associated for the annexation piece of this or not? Like, there's nothing there until we start to write on plats and infrastructure?
The annexation, as far as, you know, maps go and plans, it's really just considered with the, or all is concerned with the boundary, the outer boundary. And that's from a legal standpoint. Once they get into the plating, that's when all the easements would, you know, they have to go through all the title work, identify all the easements, identify all the existing infrastructure across the property there. We work with the designers quite a bit, they're well aware of the irrigation going across there. So that is preserved. If it's water users, infrastructure that we're with water users on how they use it, if it's available, if it's not available, they'll work on their own system. But at the end of the day, you know, there's city codes and water users build, water rights, all that stuff plays in and protects, you know, all those various elements out of the subdivision city.
Thanks. So rather than go through each one of those individually, I think we need to bring the conversation back to just the fact that either R2, either we're, you're okay with it, not okay with it, and we need to start basing that on. Do we have enough mix, you know, mix of housing options in the area? Are we keeping zoning contiguous to other zoning? You know, basically the standard things that we look at and whether this application meets those criteria or not. I think we've made it very clear that a lot of these concerns, things that will be dealt at multiple other opportunities if and when a development actually occurs, so.
Other than the difference in density, that will not.
I think, no.
Faces before that.
Exactly.
If the difference in density has any material bearing on anything in the code about how we make a decision, including the, let's say, health, health, the safety, welfare, this is the time to address that issue and everything else.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
But I guess I would love to go through the checklist, you could say, and address when some of these are going to be addressed and when some of them are not going to be addressed.
Yeah, so let's do that.
So when it comes to any wetlands within the area, within the 35 acres, when will those wetland issues be addressed during this planning process?
Subdivision and sketch plan as well. So a lot of times on sketch plan, they've already done their delineations to identify if and where they exist, if they're jurisdictional, they're the US Army Corps of Engineers. Typically, if they are, they're off limits. From a practical standpoint, they're really expensive to do mitigation. And then again, the subdivision.
So the point is, we're going to hear about it in future meetings, but today, when it comes to zoning, it really has nothing to do with zoning.
Correct.
Dark skies, we hear a lot about dark skies every time a new neighborhood comes in. Does Montrose have any dark sky requirements as a whole?
Yes, and they're getting changed and improved as well.
We have an upcoming meeting that's going to talk about some changes to our land use, right?
Yes, so the initial cut and then, yeah.
Right. Is that going to be one of those subjects that's addressed, Will, is dark skies?
So this upcoming meeting doesn't really have much substantive change, so to speak, to the code, it's more of a consolidation and rewrite the code, if that's a fair way to phrase that. I don't know, to my colleagues.
Reorganization.
Reorganization.
So, but more important, I guess, what we're still hitting at is dark skies. We do have some dark sky requirements, and as they design the neighborhood, they're going to have to fall within those dark, the current dark sky requirements.
It's very part of our community, yep. And it's something.
Excuse me.
Sorry, sir.
Are we talking about dark skies?
If you guys have questions for the staff afterwards, you can hit them with all the questions that you want when we close the public comment.
Modular versus stick built, that has nothing to do with zoning, but in general, can you talk about modular versus stick building, just so people have an understanding of what goes on within the city?
So in R2, R2 does not allow for modular housing, as the current code currently stands. There are zoning districts that do allow for modular or manufactured homes. Those would be R5, R6, or MHR. R2 does not allow for that.
Schools. Where are these kids going to attend? Let me give you my general information, you can correct me. Every single lot gives a payment to the school district for future development of other schools. It's up to the school district on how they spend that money, whether they spend money to buy land on the south side of town, on the north side of town, they have to decide where they're going to build schools. But either way, whoever buys these lots is going to be contributing to that fund to add an additional school. Is that accurate?
Yeah, with any subdivision plat, there's generally a plat note that speaks to that effect, correct? Or, or they could, in theory, donate land to a new school.
But really, it's the school district on where they're going to choose to put those schools, those future schools, that money.
Okay, in our discussion with them, do they generally welcome the enrollment?
They welcome the enrollment.
With enrollment doing its thing. You know, so, and Johnson does have room to expand, the 6700 signal is on the horizon, so there's, you know, that, again, that gets worked out at subdivisions levels, they know the amount of the lots, but generally speaking, those are usually not, those are schools you'd expect, it's expected of them.
Covenants. We're not talking about covenants associated with zoning, but they have the choice to add covenants and how restrictive, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Neighborhood association type covenants, they can be as restrictive, they can be less restrictive. Really, that's going to be up to the builder, I assume, yes?
Yes.
Or is that a future meeting? Or is that just all of the builder makes the decision, the builder?
So generally, the city doesn't have a, I don't know, not having a say is the right phrase, but generally, the city does not review the covenants associated with any subdivision. That's up to the developer to write, come up with. Certainly, they can't be illegal. There are certain, you know, Ben could probably speak to it better than I could, but there, you know, there's, there's certain covenants that wouldn't, wouldn't be able to be enforced, but in general, the developer can be as restrictive or as unrestricted as they please.
There are times when we require that they exist for certain reasons, but generally, we're not so concerned with their substance.
Commission, did I address all of those other outstanding issues to just talk about and address whether we're going to hear in the future or really it's off our table completely? Is there anything else I missed?
My question is, did this owner, this landlord, if he's in the hospital, then was he going to come and not show up?
That's my question.
Did he say?
I can't speak to that.
But he didn't say, I'm coming, right? I mean, you don't know if he was coming or not coming, right?
So, you know, we, we let the applicant know the hearing date, whether or not they are physically present, I can't speak to that, but you have a representative here, but, you know, I don't have control over.
Is the representative?
Does the representative want to present anything to us?
Say anything.
For your choice.
Sure, I'm Dan Schell of Delmon Consultants. The owner of this project, he actually had a family emergency, had to fly to the east coast, I just found out last night. He called me this morning, apologized for not being able to be here, but it was out of his control. He did plan to be here, but he had a family emergency on the east coast, and that's all I know.
And can I ask you, does this owner of this property live here in Montrose?
He lives in Junction, actually. They've been building, Synergy Homes has been building homes all over Montrose for quite, quite a while now. Yeah.
Can you name the subdivisions?
Waterfall Canyon and, trying to think what else they have, the one just in use of Waterfall Canyon as well.
Uh-huh.
They're, they're all in the place.
Um, we, we can deny it, and they can, the owner of this property can then go on to city council and get a few more, recommend, we can recommend to deny it. Or we can ask for a continuation, which means everybody can come back and do the same thing in a, in a different room, actually, the acoustics will be better.
We hope.
Yeah. Say the same thing, and you could then hear from the owner, the developer. Quite honestly, what, if I had to make a, I don't like it. It's too dense, it's just too much. I think at a planning level, like we're a planning commission, and I get it that we need more homes in Montrose, but when they brought up Matt Miles's, the woods, that's like an atomic bomb went off. I mean, seriously. I just, when I look at that right across the yard, it's just too much coming in. And it's not fair, I would say, thank you, like she said here, I thank you for coming. I've never felt so old in my life. If you get out there, you go, yeah, I'm 60 something. No, I'm 60 something, you guys are not old. So helping yourself in capital, you don't have a lot of years to live.
Maybe it's like they're sure they got some.
Well, the safety, health and welfare, where does mental health come into that? I mean, mental health is hurting them right here. So that's a stretch. But I say that, you guys, as a commission, who I'm, we're only talking to most ourselves, I don't know that I would need a continuation, because I'm not sure that the owner can tell me anything that would change my mind. I mean, these guys have a right to come and say, and we have to make, we have to actually listen to what they say. I don't hear any one person saying, "Oh, my gosh, let's build a big, dense subdivision up there. That'd be so great, because we come in on that eastern corridor." I just, I don't think you could change it. So, I mean, also, it's pretty reasonable that they're asking for R1B. They could say, I mean, Merbeth did ask for an open space, and I appreciate it. But I think that a R1B, even when I look at the map, right? Because when we're going to come across the other projects that are not up yet, they have the use by right. And we are not going to be in this position where we can make a decision for density and affect everybody's health and well-being. So this is one of these rare cases where we don't have somebody in front of us that has a use by right, and that they can actually do it. We have this map in front of us here that really, in my opinion, speaks loudly. And I'm really sad for the applicant, because he can't be here. And I understand that everyone has the right to make money with developing, you know, and we've given a lot of opportunities in town, but a lot of those opportunities that, at least since I've started, were all used by rights. And so it's pretty rare that we have this opportunity to look at this map and say, "Well, I'm seeing this R1B and then continuously, one B too? If it has multiple families later?" Well, nothing we can do, use by right, whatever. But today, we can't.
Just to clarify, I think that, and maybe for the audience too, I mean, I don't, I mean, we've talked about this before, and so we don't, someone doesn't have the use by right yet because it hasn't been zoned, but they certainly have a right to request a zoning, and we need to make a decision not, it's not a vote based on what people in the audience think. There's a legal code that dictates how we have to make the decision today. And part of that is the public health, safety and welfare.
And the proof presented by the public.
Yeah, at least that's what I'm saying, yeah. And so when you guys come in and you state the impacts on you, what we're really looking for to follow the code and what we have to do legally to follow the code is see how, what you're presenting, what you're saying, and facts that you're citing, how they concretely impact public safety, help, public safety and welfare. And I think, sort of to Chad's point about what is being brought up and relevant today or not, is the extent to which the density decision itself, whether it's R1B or R2, whether that material is going to impact the public safety, the public safety and welfare.
You guys, let's keep that in mind, but we've, okay, gone down to that roundabout at Hillcrest, too, this dumps into that as well, you know?
And I'll just, to finish up, I think the thing that seems most relevant, because the staff, I think, people have cited in the audience different ways in which it impacts you. You know, for instance, the road conditions on Miami. And I think, for instance, to give that example, Scott cited how the city does account for the safety of Miami, and that's not going to be impacted. How the city protects that safety is not going to be impacted, whether this zoning is R2 or R1B, because the city has a procedure, you know, to navigate, and they're going to do that. And so to my mind, the outstanding issue in terms of how it does more concretely impact the welfare of the community is whether or not that, whether or not that road would be punched through and the extent to which the traffic would go through there or not. And if that road is punched through, or the traffic does, you know, go through right there, and there's an additional, we can do the math, hundreds of trips down that road, that seems to me to be a material factual difference in what's going on in that community. And again, it's hard, we don't think we have, that's why earlier I was trying to suss out whether the density of that commute, whether that zoning was R1B or R2A or R2, would impact whether that road was punched through or not. And to my knowledge and what the city has said, we don't have any, we can't make a conclusion about whether that density decision would impact whether the road goes through.
That conclusion on combat subdivision will.
What's that?
That conclusion could be drawn definitively, you know?
Yeah.
Exactly. Look at quantity that will be added, capacity of the roadway based on, you know, its geometry.
You said it could or couldn't be drawn definitively.
That conclusion could be drawn at subdivision level.
Yes.
Subdivision.
Certainly. So, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Something said earlier, I wanted to address it briefly. This is not like a rezone, where you can just deny an application. It's an initial zone. So you would apply the evidence you perceive is relevant to the law and make a decision. You can't just not zone it, though, because we have to zone it.
No, we could do R1B, correct?
I think Phoebe was saying you could do a continuation until the applicant's would get.
Or it says, "Give motion to deny the request."
Well, that's different from, you can't just not take action. You're going to have to zone the property. And so while rezone is something where you can deny the request, here you can't without just denying the entire process and maybe bringing it to a speech hall. You can't continue an annex if you don't zone it.
Or we can keep talking to a lawyer.
Better, could you, could, in that case, because the way it's written in our packet makes it seem like it's a.
We have the option to deny, according to our packet, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'm suggesting that isn't entirely the way that.
Okay, so.
You want our options?
So the options are approve a or recommend to city council approval of R2.
In part.
Or recommend to city council that they don't approve R2.
Or do we recommend to city council?
Or do we recommend a different zoning?
One B.
You can recommend a different zone, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, all right. Then we don't have to, we don't have to go back to the applicant to, because their request is.
This is the hearing, and the applicant bears the burden of supporting his application.
So the applicant can either, they go to city council? Yes, I get what they are asking for, or whatever it is. If we recommend a totally different zone, that's just a recommendation.
That is a recommendation, correct. Council will then take that up and decide. There are some other things that can happen here, but for our purposes, council will decide whether they wish to approve the recommendation or not. But that's a separate hearing.
So to Phoebe's point about a continuation, I think we know how the public feels about this issue, and I don't think it hoothes them to have another chance to just say the same stuff over again. And I don't personally see any value to proceeding by discontinuing it at this stage. If we were talking about subdivision and they weren't here, that'd be a whole different situation. I don't know, you guys feel any differently?
No, there's not many to agree with.
Okay.
At least I'm lying.
So let's get that off the table. I mean, is there any other discussion then that you guys feel you need to have about R2 versus R1B? I mean, I think I agree with Phoebe and Delphine. I think that you have that other subdivision that is already developed, fully developed, and with the potential for, the way it's designed, that it's plotted, like, R1B, I think makes, makes more sense in this case.
Oh, yes, we are.
We're not there yet, so.
I look at this a few different ways. If we go from an R2 to a R1B, it may not get developed, because there's no way that somebody may not be able to top it after that. But I got to be honest with you, that's okay.
It's not our job, so.
Yes, I would like this, there are subdivisions. I like through there. I think it's really a nice-looking subdivision, and I would hate to see that destroyed by going to R2, which I feel that have 7,500-foot lots will do that. And my other concern is Miami, which I think is just about where everybody else is. Because one, Matt Miles, they continue building, and I think there's only five homes, six homes built on that lot right now. You put in another 494 homes, the traffic's going to go way up on that. So really, until Miami gets straightened out, I don't believe that I could go with R2.
Yeah, so I would vote for R1. And so I think that the thing here, to bring back to Steve's point, is that the issue is that some of these things that have been brought tonight really hit on that, the welfare and potential safety impacts that an R2 could exacerbate.
Because no matter who owns the land, it's, you know, zoned out.
Exactly, and then like Delphine said, it becomes a use by right, even if it's 25 years from now before they develop it.
Even if you sold it.
Yeah.
So my general conversation associated with this issue is we've got some very big lots that are in the neighborhood next door. We have our comprehensive plan that indicates it's going to be a medium density. And the whole point of the comprehensive plan is to warn everybody that buying house, that, hey, all around you, it's either going to be high density, medium density, low density. So you have an idea, not a promise, but you have an idea where the city is thinking about going for zoning in the future. And so it's not a secret that for an extended period of time, the city has been considering medium density for that particular land. It's not a secret. Anytime, I always appreciate realtors, but they put up the sign that says, "Future developments right here, ready to be developed." And that's exactly the sign that we've all seen farther down the road on Miami. The Realtor has said, "Future development coming." So everybody's known that houses are going to be there, neighborhoods are going to be there. Deer are going to be pushed off that land, and kids are going to be on bicycles. So we know that that development's coming. We know that the city has planned all along that it's going to be medium density. To me, 7,500 square foot lot is not, it's not, it's not high density. We can look across the street at Matt Miles's neighborhood, and that's going to be even higher density. So I do see this as a buffer between a Matt Miles's neighborhood and these very big lots of the folks across, you know, in this room. Ultimately, the folks have brought up a lot of very important issues that need to be addressed in the next future meetings associated with the neighborhood development, as we truly see where the roads are going to connect, how their yes or no going to connect, et cetera. There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. But when it comes to this density, when we're talking about the hundreds of homes that are going to be coming on Miami road that have already been approved, there's hundreds. 80 houses more or less does not, is not a dramatic change. That's what's going to happen around Miami.
Close, close, sorry, sorry.
So this is the conversation.
This is the hard conversation. We're talking, you see, in Harris.
So if I may, right? So to me, it might not impact you, right? And I think that's what, the last one that unfortunately I missed on that corner on Hillcrest. Yeah, I wasn't here until we went high density, because we were like, it's not that big of a difference. But when we have this many people in the room, it is a big difference that impacts our community on a different level than others. And so for me, when I look at this map, I do feel that even though in your mind, I see what you're saying, it kind of blends between the R3 and the R1. So it kind of blends, right? So because I can see, I'm a visual person, so I see what you're seeing. There's an R3 there, an R1B, R2 in the middle, kind of makes sense. But when we know how it can impact our community so drastically, and because we have so many other approved, and we are really addressing the need in the community already, I do not see why we would have to go with R2. If it doesn't make a difference to you, then R2 or R1B.
It does, but I guess we, as a country, look at property rights.
Right.
And the property rights of a person who owns this land, is it putting the neighborhood at harm by having higher density? I don't see that it's putting the neighborhood at harm. Do they want it? No. Would they love to have five-acre lots right next to them instead? Absolutely, they would. But that's not their choice, because they don't own that 35 acres.
Chad, I think if there wasn't the possibility of the road punching through, I think most of what you're saying didn't address that possibility. I think what you're saying, if the road potentially doesn't go through and that additional, say, whatever it is, 80 units, isn't, all those trips aren't going through the neighborhood, and the difference between R1 and 2, what you're saying really applies. But the potential to change, you know, the character and the safety of the road in that way, I think, is what differentiates, is what you didn't address and what differentiates the sort of general, does this land use accord with the comprehensive plan? Which I think a case can be made either way about it blending and it, I think, you know, you definitely could go back and forth. But I think, again, that's why I think the relevant thing for the public safety and welfare is the road punching through. And I don't know if we can go back to Scott, and if you can, I guess we haven't provided more, like, is it realistic that the traffic would go through that neighborhood versus just coming out to Miami and going down the road? Or that, again, there's really not, you would just be entirely speculating if we come and it all is out.
Don't say anything, Scott.
The things to the comprehensive plan is a guide, am I right?
It's a guide, yes.
Lawyer. Yes. It is a guide. So it does give the idea to people, hello, this might happen. But it's a moving document, and it's a guide, and it doesn't mean it's a guarantee.
Right.
Difference.
I think you do, like, you do make some really good points, Chad, about that, because there are often many times when the kind of the roles are reversed, and, you know, it's actually lower, the future land use map actually has a lower density than what's being requested. And in this case, it's actually, no, actually, we're saying that the comp plan says higher density, and the R2 is lower than that. It's not R3A, it's not R3. I think your, I think, no, I think your points are valid. Richard, did you have anything?
I've heard a lot of discussion for R1B, and I've heard very little consideration for why there should be an R2A.
Thank you.
All right. Stephen.
I don't think there's a need for a continuation.
I think we're, yeah, we're good there. Steve?
I would just repeat things we've said about, again, seriously, is that it's not, despite the applause in the room, that's not the reason, you know, that's not the way in which a decision is made, and the balance between the rights of the property owner to apply for the zoning and binding basis on the curve is what we're going to be the decision on. But I haven't agreed with that.
Okay. So with, just to remind all of you guys who are ever going to say something, is that we're not denying, we're recommending something, something to city council. And so I think we, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
I hereby make the motion to recommend to city council approving approval the initial zoning request of R1B, which is mid-density district. That still termed as low-density district?
It's a small estate district.
Small estate district?
R1B is a small, small.
All right, so initial zoning request of R1B, small estate district, period.
I think we leave out the request, because that wasn't actually requested. So it's the initial zoning of R1.
Okay, the initial zoning of R1B.
Correct.
Okay. Request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll say.
Delphine, God, Delphine.
I wouldn't be able to ask.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we need to have any discussion about the recommendation? No? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Put your name.
All right. So motion passes? All right, we better thank you all for coming. You can count the staff for as long as you want. Guys, sorry, I apologize. We need to end our meeting. Close. If I could just get you to be quiet for two seconds, so we can wrap up the end of our meeting here. And then you can talk and count the staff. All right, sorry, guys. All right, so staff, is there any other business?
No, there is none.
Meeting next time.
Oh, yes. Monday night, and that will be in the.
The master of the code.
Yeah. Sorry, folks, folks, get quiet, please.
No, hey, wait, you got just a minute.
It'll be five thirty.
Five thirty Monday. Okay, and then we have a meeting at the end of the month, correct?
We'll be in another point.
Okay, cool. All right.
And that, that will be in the.
Back.
Back to the normal.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. All right.
We'll let you know if anything to do at that code meeting.
Yeah, it's optional.
There is nothing.
All right. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Phoebe, Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Phoebe's adjourned. You guys can talk as much as you want.